Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Could you please stand and salute the flag with me?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay. We don't have any awards presentation appointments and proclamations. We have citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Okay, I had to see what that was for a second. Council of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward electorally, identify themselves, and use a microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items were referred to staff for a follow-up. Citizens' comments in writing to the city clerk by five o'clock of the day of the city council shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record. However, they will not be read. Is there anybody that would like to say anything tonight that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Close that. Go to public hearing, we have none. Consent calendar, we have none. Item number six, ordinance presentation and discussion of potential action items. Receive community input on ensuring the safety of Colinga schools. Sean?
All right, thank you. Good evening, and I appreciate all who are in attendance for tonight's meeting. Tonight's meeting has been scheduled for the purpose of an opportunity for the community to provide public comment as it relates to what the city of Colinga can do to ensure the safety of our schools. As we all know, the schools have their own procedures and policies in place by the council, I'm sorry, in place, but the council would like to gather input from the community as to what the city can do to help this effort. Once comments have been provided, it will be up to the city council to determine if there are topics that the council would like to bring back as a future agenda item to discuss further. It is not the intent of this meeting to provide for back-and-forth dialogue between the city council, school staff, or board members and the public. The purpose of this meeting is to gather public comment and feedback for possible future discussion. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. We'll just, if you'd like to say anything, just come up and present your name and start your topic. So if anybody would like to come first, raise your hand, or, sir?
My name is Michael Griffith, I live at 175 McCollum here in Colinga. First of all, thank you for having this meeting, it's very important to me, it's near and dear to my heart. I have four grandchildren going through the school system, hopefully more pretty soon, so. My format is gonna be mostly in question form versus my ideas, because it may be yes or no questions, and I understand you may not want to answer everything I have to ask in front of a public forum, but I did write down some ideas on things that came to mind that I thought may or may not come into play or be helpful, or it's up to you guys, obviously, but. Number one question is, does the police department have a Colinga-Huron Unified School District master key in their possession? Master key is something I noticed was a very, much a shortcoming in the Uvalde situation. They were just struggling for keys, wasting a lot of time. I'm figuring if the police department had a copy of a master key that opened everything that the school district has, it would speed up response. That's number one, I have a few of these. Glass breakers were another issue at Uvalde. They had difficulty opening windows, they get painted shut sometimes, the glass doesn't want to break with standard wands, and they needed glass-breaking tools, and they didn't have them. Flashbangs, another good idea, to stun a shooter. Ballistic shields, I don't know if you guys have them, but it would sure be a good idea to have some. Door breaching devices. Again, I don't know what you guys have, but it's just another thing that I came up with. We also, in our school district, we don't have just schools in Colinga, we have schools in Huron, so I'd really love to see Huron involved with this, too. I don't want to leave them out of play. Does Colinga PD have access to the school district's iCloud camera system? That would be a really helpful tool if you could see inside of hallways live on a smartphone. Does Colinga PD currently have maps of the school district's buildings or drawings showing door openings? A lot of these buildings, they're modules, and they're connected in the middle. You'll see one door on the outside, maybe two, but when you get in the room, you get into four different locations inside these buildings, so it'd be really handy to have maps or drawings, you know, at your convenience. I was wondering if campus tours would be a good thing for the police department? Walk down all the campuses, get familiar with them best you can, I know there's always a turnover, but it'd be better than not, I would think. Does the Colinga PD have an arrangement with CDCR and the hospital out there for backup? And potentially even, you know, if the school district decides to go with SROs again, maybe they could be worked into the format. Wouldn't just be the burden for the Colinga Police Department. It'd be great PR for the state of California, like, hey, we have a small community here with lots of police officers, lots of cops, really, really close to our school district, so maybe they should be hit up. See, propose secure, okay, I'll leave that. Use them for focus violent crimes. Okay, another idea that I had was, if we do have SROs in the future, maybe they could only deal with violent crimes, leave the regular crimes, the cigarette smoking, the broken windows, things like that, to the school district to deal with, and just let the SROs deal with violent crimes, nothing but eyes on the situation for them. And think about open campuses at lunchtime. It's always been a contentious point over the years with, you know, the city restaurants and stuff, they want open campuses for lunch and stuff like that, but it also creates another avenue for people to come and go with, you know, weapons possibly. And maybe the police department could work with Colinga-Huron Unified School District with active shooter training and drills, I think they have in the distant past.
That's after shooters?
Active shooter drills.
Oh, active.
Get the PD involved with training with the school district. And another idea, I'm almost done here. Perform gate and door lock audits, where you just show up as a police department and you start checking doors and gates. You find them open, you know, notify the school district. And we have, I think in Colinga, counted 12 to 13 individual schools, but sometimes you could encompass schools in the same campus, if that makes sense. So there's a lot of different districts, there are a lot of schools in Colinga and Huron, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Just my ideas, thanks.
Have a good one. Anybody else? Come on up.
Mayor, Council. Nathan Vosberg, 760 Hazelhurst Way, District Three. First off, I would just like to state that I have two children currently attending school right now. One at the middle school and one at the high school, with a two-year-old daughter that will be attending in her near future. I have a wife, a mother-in-law, multiple cousins and friends that are all working at the district. They deserve to work in an environment that is both safe and secure. They deserve to be able to go to work and not worry about active shooters, gang violence, and mental abuse. These are issues that are not central to Colinga and Huron, but the entire country, as violence is being propagated at what seems an epidemic proportion, specifically in California, with what seems like no consequences for their actions. This is not just at school, it's everywhere. I've researched a few items that I think the city can do to play a role to assist in the schools. I would like to see these things at least be discussed in order to provide assistance. One, school safety assessment. That's something that the police department could do, they could go in and assess the safety. Two, what's the school climate and safety with socio-emotional programs? It's a big deal nowadays. We have a bunch of kids that are darn near snowflakes now, and since that's the case, we gotta meet that as well. Campus building and classroom security, look into that. See what it is that we can do to harden that security. I know that they have new technology out. The Uvalde thing brought all kinds of new ideas to the table, what other places are doing, kind of saying, hey, we can do these things. There's all kinds of things, I won't go into that. Anonymous reporting systems available to everyone, including the teachers and staff, so that they can anonymously report something, like, immediately. And they need to have access to this, like, so, a lot of times the teachers don't want to say anything because then everybody pretty much knows what happened, you know, and if they say something to one person to another, pretty soon, you know, that teacher is marked. And so I know a lot of times teachers don't say things. Coordination with first responders, that's a big deal. We need to have a steady coordination between the school teachers and the first responders. Behavior threat assessment and management, I think a lot of that goes with the school, but some of that could be part of the role of the city as well. School-based law enforcement, it's always a thing, whether the school provides their own resource officers or whether they purchase them from the city. Mental health resources available? I think that this town is in desperate need of some mental health resources, not just for the school, but for everywhere. We have a whole bunch of homeless people out there, and almost all of them have mental health issues. You can just tell, they're talking to themselves, they're talking to the sky, they're walking around shaking their fist at inanimate objects. Drills, and then social media monitoring. I hate to be the person, you know, I always get tagged on this, he always wants to be the person that monitors things, but some of these things can be stopped with good social media monitoring. These ten items come from the COPS Officers Resource Center at HTTPS forward slash COPS dot USD OJ dot GOV. This is available, anyone can see it.
Could you say that one more time?
Okay, it's COPS, C-O-P-S dot U-S-D-O-J dot G-O-V, as in Victor. I'm almost done. Our school systems, like everyone else, is vulnerable to mental and physical attacks on our youth and teachers. These items need to be addressed at multiple levels, not just the school, not just the city, but everywhere. Pretty much needs to start at home, too, unfortunately, we have a big problem with parents and, you know, that type of deal. I know that people would just like to say this falls on the schools to protect our children, but really this falls on the entire community, starting at home with the parents and working its way up to the teachers and the agencies. And everyone should be a community partner in this, we should have everybody involved. There are many things that will cost the city resources to be able to do this and may or may not be mitigated by other agencies, but will have an impact on our safety at the schools. Through the years, I've seen this community be divided at the agency levels. Everyone up here knows this. All these agencies, whether it's the school district, Park and Rec, City, it always seems like there's something, some reason why we don't play nice with each other, and we need to get past that. We really need to figure out what it is and work towards fixing it. I know one item in the past that's been successful has been the SROs, which in theory is a great idea, but what happens when the school is paying for a resource that becomes unavailable? Like, it's just not there, like someone's sick, or they get COVID, or things like that. What happens when the school makes a phone call and there's no one there to respond? This has happened. I don't think this is acceptable. I think if, one of the ideas that I would have going forward is if the school's gonna pay for an SRO, that they pay for the position, not the person. That way they're actually paying for that position. So you have one officer, and if someone calls in sick, it doesn't matter, you fill it with somebody else. That way they always have someone there, because the school is always in need of people to be there. And lastly, I'll just say that I think that discipline at all levels is at an all-time low, and it's unfortunate, because this is what's being set at the standard in Sacramento. And so people are used to seeing other people get let off for doing things, and now it's just a free-for-all. And it affects the kids. When the parent, when they see the parents doing crimes and doing petty thefts, and our police department can't even put their pictures on there anymore because our government has said, no, you can't do it. It filters all the way up into their kids and filters all the way to the school system, and I think that I'd like to see there's some real discipline being talked back and forth between the city and the schools, and what can we do in order to make this a safer place for everyone. I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tammy Rivera, 172 Harrison, Colinga. I actually have two children in fifth and third grade this coming year, and I expected a little bit something different from this meeting. I was hoping you would come to us as parents and let us know what the city is doing in collaboration with the school district. I would like to know what training our officers have had. I tried to go online to City Colinga and find the police department policies. I could only find from 2018, I may have not been looking in the right place. I didn't see anything about active shooter. I saw hostage, and there was another topic, which, when it's an active shooter, from everything I've read and heard, you don't negotiate, you just go in. So I would have hoped that we would have had a coming together for the parents of Colinga, letting us know what the city's committing to, what the school district is committing to, so that as parents we know what to expect when, thank God, we hope we never get that call, we know what to expect, where we're supposed to station, what you expect from us, because if we don't know what you want, we may get in your way. We may interfere with what's going on. And I was interested in knowing who's supporting the police department. We only have a few handful of officers here. Our schools are pretty spread out. Is CDC gonna step in? Is Department of State Hospital's gonna step in as help, as backup? Are they first responders, as far as, do they step in first, do they collaborate? And are our officers, and I mean this in no disrespect, but Colinga doesn't face active shooters and people with AK-15 guns. If you live in LA-
Hopefully they never have to.
I hope we never have to, but what we saw in Texas was those officers were afraid, afraid, misguided, given wrong information. But do our officers understand, and do they take an oath, that they are to go in? From listening to the FBI information, it's, once you have two or three officers and you have the equipment, the shields, there should be shields in the trunk of the car, there should be weapons in the car, there should be everything that officers need if they're the first responders. Do they have all of that? That falls on the city, in my opinion, that they should have all the equipment each officer needs to be the first responder. And are our officers truly aware how dangerous that job is to go in and face those shooters? Because none of us have had to do it. I don't know of anybody in Colinga that has had to face that. So I just hope you come back with all the information for the parents so that we know what to expect when school starts, and suggest to the school they need to finish their fencing, they haven't finished it, there's open spots. The element, the bishop keeps their gates open during the day. I saw a person walk in with a weapon. They were a probation officer, but they parked their car in the red zone and walked onto campus with a firearm. So our gates aren't secured even when they go lock in the back, they leave the fronts open. The middle school, Dawson, is wide open. If you come in from the, facing it from the left side, you can walk right into the first group of classrooms, and that needs to be addressed with the school. So if you're meeting with them, I hope you would bring that up, because the schools are not all secured. Anybody can walk in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Lori?
Good evening, Mayor, honorable city council members and guests. I would like to first thank you very much for having this meeting tonight. I do think that it's true that it takes a village to raise a child, and it takes all of us to manage the safety of not only our children, our staff, but also all of our community members. And I think there have been a lot of great points tonight, and I want to start out by acknowledging that we've had a very good working relationship with the city, and we appreciate that, and we look forward to continuing that. And I think that tonight, some of the points that were made, I want you to know that my board, myself, and my staff, we are committed to safety, and I think the more we work together, the more we know about each other's, you know, strategies, plans, et cetera, the better we'll be in a situation that we never want to be in. And a couple things, when there's an active shooter situation, our job is to lock down and wait for y'all to come and save us.
Right.
That's our plan. You know, the better the city's tactical plan is, the more groups that are here from the outside that come in and know what our tactical plan is and can help us take immediate action, the better we're all gonna be when we have to respond to that situation. And I recently met an FBI agent from the Fresno field office who's been assigned to education in the region, and I have her card and her cell number. She's offered to come out and help us, not only with our training, but to take a look at our plans. I invite you to have the police department, fire department, anybody who will be responding to us to come and be a part of that conversation, because she has an expertise in school safety and active shooting. So we are very much looking forward to that. And I want to let you know that we have a camera plan going into place. We have a fencing plan coming up, and we are also working on some point-of-entry systems where people won't be able to just walk into the office anymore. We've actually had some incidences of some of the people that Nathan mentioned that are unstable, that have walked into the office, scared the staff, refused to leave. And so we're gonna be putting up a system where there's gonna be a camera, they'll ring the bell, we'll see who they are, and then we can buzz them in. So we're gonna be making a significant investment into these items, and I know that people are gonna say, but Sunset Street is so beautiful and open, and, you know, it's like a park on Sunset Street, but for us, it's become a risk that, you know, we need to mitigate. So you'll start to see some of these projects coming up. Sean's been really great about working with us when we have projects like this, we appreciate that. But again, it'll take all of us, and we are buying cloud-based cameras. We recently sent all of the information to Lieutenant back there so that he'll know which camera systems we're getting. If we have similar systems that we can all look at, we'll be able to, you know, solve problems quickly. The other thing is, we have an outstanding program called Navigate Prepared, which has 3D maps of all of our schools and classrooms. It is available to the police and fire department. We're happy to, you know, give any refresher lessons that are necessary, but we've undergone the process of having every single room photographed so that if there's an incident in a room, an officer can immediately look to see, where's the door, where's the windows, where's the fire extinguisher, where's the drinking fountain? Like, we have maps that have everything available that a tactical response would need. So we feel like we're taking some real state-of-the-art steps there. We've had that program actually for about four years now. And we do conduct a lot of drills, and we have an actual system built in with a lot of scenarios that we work with. So we invite continued work with the city, and we, again, appreciate everything and that you're having this meeting and your willingness to work with us.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to bring up anything? Okay, these were all a lot of great ideals. We'll have our staff and ourselves go over these and see what we want to bring back and talk about, and these will be at future meetings, so stay tuned. This is just starting, and we'll get with Lori and the school board and do some more stuff, too, so. And I know we can, you talked about the state hospital and the prison. We have a great resource right there, and I know that they would be right there with us. We've worked on some other stuff together, too, so that'll be happening, too, I hope. If there's any other questions, or any council members have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, does anybody know where the next school board meeting is?
Yes, it's next Tuesday night.
What time?
Six thirty PM.
Okay.
In the Old Neely Building. Oh, it's in Huron, wait, I forgot. It's in Huron.
Okay.
Huron Elementary School.
Can anybody else have anything? Okay, well, thank you guys for coming, and, oh, sorry.
I got you, I got you, I got you, I got you. But you know, and this is what this meeting was for, was about, so everybody can be on the same page, and I agree with what you said, you know, staging area, but I know it's kind of difficult to just give an automatic staging area if you don't know where the incident's at. It's kind of hard to pre-plan one, but we can handle that. That's something that we can definitely work with. And the ideas that you brought, we will definitely come to a cohesive resolution, because the prison will be responding, and so will the state hospital, but as they say, by the time they get here, it only takes a few seconds for the incident to be at that high level, just like we've seen the one at the mall, where it took two minutes to three minutes to take care of that shooter is what our expectation of, of the first responder there. Like you said, when you can go in safely, go handle your business. I mean, and that's what that gentleman did, and he wasn't even an officer. He was just in the mall, flagging people through, and he took care of business, what his training led him to do. And that's what we want to be able to do in this environment, but with your input and with the things that we can do to help the school, because, like she says, we're all as one at the end- and with the things that we can do to help the school, because, like she says, we're all as one at the end of the day. I mean, there is no Superman that's going to come down and swoop and save us, so we know what we have here. And it's just, our schools are so vulnerable. You can't do that and save Mark, because 98% of us are going to be packing anyway. So that's not a viable resource for that individual to go and take charge of, but the schools are. So, and that was the biggest thing, is that it's, we're so isolated. We're not going to get Clovis, Fresno, I mean, it is not going to happen. So we need to be proactive, instead of reactive, to when the situation comes. And I agree, training, training, training. It gets that mentality of when you hear these things go off, what you normally would do from your training, where's it going to lead you? And that's where we're at. And I don't want to divulge, in my opinion, of what our strategies are, because we don't know who the enemy is. That's my thing. If it's written, and the chief, they know, the fire, PD, all these guys know what to do, that's beautiful. I would not want to put it out so everybody can see what our plan is. It's easier to take out the enemy when you know their strategies. So, I mean, if that's how we want to run it, I'm cool with that. But if, I feel like any time you do want to know, I don't think anybody has any negativity in describing, we do have something intact. We are training for this event, pray to God that it never happens, but we have to be ready for it if it does. I mean, that's just my thing, though. But thank you all for coming out, we really appreciate it. And we will put these ideas in with the master guy over here, Sean, and just put things to work, get the bar rolling. Yes, but thank you.
Anybody else like to say anything? Okay. I don't have, do you have any announcements? Council? And I have nothing, so, any future agenda items? Not yet, okay. We have no closed session, so thank you guys for coming, and this meeting is adjourned.